Things are moving along in the acting house.
And it turned out beautiful last Friday after we talked on the phone and it was pouring.
Oh, yeah.
And then that night, the boots guy came out and the next thing was gorgeous.
Welcome to weather in New England.
But I couldn't row till the garden because I would have gone in up to nine knees. I mean, it's still pretty bad. I don't know that I'll be able to row till this weekend.
How are things at the living house? Good. You through the brown-tailed moth experience?
Yeah. True, some of the trees are coming back.
Oh, yeah, the ones in front of them. Yeah.
Solid call.
No, Mrs. Poole's daughter. Why can't I think of her first name? Oh, you know, that Liz on. Susan, yes. Her house, because those were bad. And they're all the, but he had put that stuff screwed that stuff into the trunks and that those really bounced back. Those oaks had bounced have bounced back. They don't look too bad. How are they down near you?
Terrible. Well, I mean.
Had that some of the leaves started to come.
They've they've somewhat come back. You can see sort of, you know, lots of malformed leaves.
Yeah.
Have grown back from nothing.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, because there were lots of trees that.
Yeah.
Got down to the branch, like not a single leaf.
Yeah.
Doug, I got six of one. Did you? You have a form.
Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order. Will you please stand and salute flag?
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. First thing on the, or the next thing on the agenda is for the approve of the minutes of the last meeting, June 30. And I thought they were good. I thought. She's not here.
Who? No, she's gonna watch the Zoom meeting. And I'm taking notes as well.
Okay.
I attended as a member of the public. Am I able to vote on these as a?
You are now.
Okay.
I didn't see anything exciting. Nothing looked good. So I make a motion to approve the June 30th minutes as.
Great. I'll say.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next thing on the agenda are the Department reports, Department head reports and Chief Valheren. Do you want to go?
Yep, I will. Good evening. After the last select meeting, I did order the new car, the new charger. I spoke to Leo Schcoine up at the Quark Auto. And he figured end of August, middle of September for a delivery date. That's if everything goes well. Last Saturday, as you know, we had the beach party. It was myself and three other officers down there. Good crowd. Did actually emptied out quick once the fireworks were done. No problems during that night. So that worked out well. I'll remind you this one this time and then I'll do the next one meeting as well. August 3rd is going to be our national light out. And I believe I put on there at six o'clock. If I remember right.
Yep.
So everyone's invited. And the only other thing I have is if you haven't, if you don't follow Facebook at all. We did have some ATVs running around Friday night, Saturday morning. Did some jump at the fields at the high school and we've gotten some video, not quite. We're still working on that, so. We'll see how that comes out. And that is all I have.
Thank you. There any questions?
Um, I have a question. When do you think that? Have we made plans with Keith about when those signs that we approved or might go up? And what is the one without? The one in front of Compton Hall? Have you downloaded any data from that to see?
I have. Yeah, I have downloaded some information on that. I haven't, I was gonna wait for a full month, so. A month then.
Yeah.
I don't know about signs, to be honest with you. I don't even know if they've been ordered.
I don't believe they've been ordered yet. One of them is not impacted by the sidewalk project down there. The other one might be depending on where it goes. I'd have to take a look at that, but no, they have not been ordered yet.
Okay.
I was thinking about them yesterday, actually.
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
I noticed that, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, uh, Dan Roy showed a lot of the interior of the building since he's owned it and they've done a lot of work to it. It looks beautiful. He'll have a, when he does his, his thing from there.
You ready for me?
Yeah, sorry.
Just a couple of things. I just want to let the board know and the public know that we are working really hard to try to find a code enforcement officer to replace Daniel. Daniel is available by email only at this point. He does come in one afternoon a week to issue building permits and actually he and Ernie were slammed on Monday afternoon this week, really busy, a group waiting for them when they got there. We are working on it. There's about 32 communities in Maine right now looking for code enforcement officers, so everyone's in the same predicament, but we're doing the best we can. And if anyone's having any problems, we do apologize, but again, Daniel's email is available on the website and please email him for any information. The building permit application is also on the website to be downloaded and printed out and sent to him. So we're doing the best we can and just hope that people can be patient. We're trying not to impede anyone's projects, but might be, it might be unavoidable for a little bit. We heard rumor the other day from a member of the public that the town offices and the police department are moving up to the academy, the old academy, and I just want to put that to rest, that that's not happening, at least not not this year, anyway, that I know of. Took the employees by surprise in the front office, find out they were moving. They didn't know anything about it. Just an update for the board, too. At the last meeting, we were talking about the CIP and the salt and sand shed. And Tim had asked us to get some information about attention building. We have reached out and gotten some information from a company that does those types of building. It is a lot less expensive, but the lifespan is also a lot shorter. So for an 85 by 100 building, it's about 90,000 for the material. That does not include the pad that it's built on. It also does not include the labor. The lifespan on the canopy part itself is about 20 years and 50 years on the frame. We still continue to feel that a regular building, structural building is the best way to go, even though it's more expensive. But again, you know, we see what we can do to get some money, you know, to help fund that before the time comes. And we'll do more research as we get closer to next year's warrant. You probably put that on there.
How much? Go ahead, Harold.
How much does it cost to recover?
To recover?
Recover the frame at the end of the 20-year.
That was, yeah, that was kind of where I was headed. If we get, you know, 40 years out of it, because 50-year life frame with this, the frame, that's gonna be probably half of what a full-built structure will cost. Huge savings to, for the town and still provide all the needed coverings and protection for the crew and the sand and that's all.
Yeah, because even a built building doesn't have much more lifespan than 50 years.
Yeah, I mean, while the salt and the, the salt and the sand and the moisture is still gonna affect the wood and everything else and spall the concrete. It's all gonna have the same type of, of wear and tear.
So if you can get that one piece of information.
Yeah. And if the salt impact, if the structure is, is a metal, how it impacts the interior of that metal? I mean, if they're using it and if other municipalities are using that type of building, but if there's salt in that sand, I would think.
Well, they use it to store salt. They use that kind of a structure to store salt. So it's what it's for.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering if that metal frame is affected at any greater rate than.
Well, generally, they're epoxy coated, which would be.
Yes.
Resistant.
Yeah.
They think, I'm sure they take.
Like rebounding bridges, yes.
And we can ask.
Yes.
We can certainly ask those questions.
Yeah.
We got the information about the company from, I think it was the town of Norway. Rob Crew reached out for us to get some information. But any building that would be built, knowing that it was for salt and sand would obviously be built knowing that that type of material was gonna be over here. I know that Keith is a little bit concerned about, you know, someone shooting into the canopy and a hole going in it or just about anything.
They can shoot into a wall.
Well, this is true. This is true.
They could apparently shoot ATVs through the ball field in the middle of the night.
Yeah, exactly. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are select board reports. What do you have? I just wanted to report that the Fourth of July celebration on the 10th of July was went pretty well, very smooth. It's a little bit of a slow start, but along about seven o'clock, the place was fairly packed. Kent had a good time with the kids in the boat race. All the kids had a really good time. I saw a lot of information on social media where the kids were really looking forward to that. At first, they didn't think it was going on, so they, you know, there was a lot of disappointment, but but the postponement actually worked in our favor and allowed us and Dan time to help organize and schedule that and get a bounce house and do a couple of other things that people normally get. We also picked up the managed to find the gentleman who sells all the little toys and doodads, which we didn't have for the, the original date. So all in all, it went along pretty well. Everybody seemed to have a good time and hopefully we can do it again. Good. Thank you. Anything else? Next, our public comment. Any public have comments? Nobody? Okay, then on to annual appointments.
Thank you. This is an annual item. One of the appointments is Susan Park to the Compton Library Trustees. Daniel Swain to be reappointed as code enforcement officer for at least the interim until we find the replacement. Ernie Sylvester is plumbing inspector and alternate code enforcement officer. And myself as town clerk, treasurer, tax collector, health officer, road commissioner, general assistance administrator.
So moved. Second. So there's a motion by Tim and a second by Harold to point the the people to those, all those positions. Everybody, all those in favor? Thank you. And next is oh, next is the carryover funds from fiscal year 21, 22.
This is, again, is an annual item. Some of these items have to be carried over by law. Those would be the tip accounts have to roll over from year to year. We have some remaining funds in the capital improvement reserve accounts that we just didn't get to extend last year. Fire department also has a generator reserve account that we need to carry forward every year until we get enough for the, for them to purchase a new generator for the fire department. Animal control, that's fees from licensing, late fees and fines that go to the animal control function. And those have to be carried forward. School buildings is the maintenance fund that was passed by the voters a couple of years ago and then again last year to help us pay for the cost of maintaining Petrel and the old middle school. Right now, as you know, we sold Petrel, but we still have ongoing expenses with the middle school. I'm using some of these funds to do some work with the administration building, but we'll also be using some of these funds going forward on whatever happens with the old academy. On the police training line, there is training that's going to be needed to take place at the police department this year, and so that's a carryover because it couldn't be done last year. Some of the other ones we want to carry over because things like demo removal just flourished during COVID. A lot of people were doing renovations to their homes, are just cleaning out, cleaning their property. And so we got kind of behind at the transfer station. So if we can carry some of that over to help get rid of that loads before we tap into the next budget. And then heating and electricity, heating came in higher than what we had budgeted only because the fuel bids came in afterwards, and so we had to put in a estimate for that. What doesn't get expended from the carryover will just lapse to the general fund next year.
Why do we want to carry over part-time wages when all the part-time wages are in the new budget? Why wouldn't we just return that back to the general fund?
We can do that. We were open that maybe we could use some of that money to be able to take care of some of the demo and you know, additional work that still needs to be done up there, but it's up to the.
That should be in the new budget. Any of that should be in the new budget. I, I think we should return that to the general fund personally. And what's the vehicle maintenance to public works wages?
This is something that I let the board know several months ago. When Tom stepped down from being foreman, he went back to being just a labor truck driver, but there really wasn't a position for him. So to avoid a layoff.
Tom?
Gregor. He was our foreman, but after a few months, he decided to step down. But there really wasn't a position for him because we had hired his replacement. And in order to keep him, we need to find some kind of money. Otherwise, we're looking at a layoff up there. We didn't really want to do that. And so I had run that by the board a few months ago and also ran it by the auditors and said if there was money left over in an account that might help to cover the expenditures of wages next year, could I move that over and put it in wages? And he said absolutely, because it's the same budget. Right now, we have the same number of people on, in public works as we started out with last year because we didn't hire a new public works director. But the foreman position is vacant right now, so if we hire someone from outside or if we hire a new public works director and Keith steps back to the foreman position, we will have one more person than was originally budgeted for.
Do we need one more person?
Yes, we do. They are right out straight. They're also dealing with some of the side roadside mowing and things that were done previously by contracted work. So some of that stuff is being done. They're, now that they have a new excavator that's working, they're doing a lot more ditching. So, yeah, we really do need the body.
That should help them get caught up on some of the dirt road maintenance then.
We're hoping.
What about, what about the brush cutting? I've had complaints that it's not getting done yet.
They've been busy between ditching and replacing a culvert up on Perkins Road and the storms clean up. They've been busy.
Do we have money to contract it out like we used to?
We do have some, yeah.
I would suggest we look at that and get it done if they're sold. I mean, let's not, let's not overburden those guys to the point where they get sick of their jobs.
And I, I was under the impression that there were, you know, bids put in for that.
We do have a line for the roadside, but you know, in the meantime, work needs to get done.
Yes, yes, but I, but I, I was under the impression because somebody that put in a bid to do it asked me about it. So I was under the impression that bids were accepted for roadside mowing, so.
I can't give you an update on that right now.
I don't think so.
So I. Yes, it was, but I, I was under the impression that it was asked for again, I guess.
Well, I think the, I think your direction is correct. We need to solicit those bids and get it done.
I did talk to Keith briefly about it the other day, but he's been going in about five or six different directions lately, so. Yeah, they're definitely busy. There's enough to keep them all busy.
How would they, how would it get done? I mean, Paul Fox had a sickle bar on his tractor. You know what that is?
Yeah.
And, and so antique tractor. So how would somebody, how would, how would the town crew?
Well, that's how, that's why we need to get a contractor out. But in the meantime, whatever cleanup that they can do along the sides of the roads and the ditching, they're doing that.
Yeah.
While we're on the topic, I noticed, it might have been yesterday or the day before, there was a crew working on a small culvert on the approach to the beach where some asphalt had deteriorated and it was a large crew and I'm just wondering what was going on.
There has been a problem there for quite a while where it's not exactly what you would call the best situation. And that is to be replaced in when beach, the sidewalk is done, there's gonna be a whole new replacement bridge put in there. Over the weekend or during the celebration, I, it was all combed off by public works because it's, you know, a safety concern. And someone actually fell in. And so they were doing some work up there to try to make it a little bit more stable.
If I might add, what happened was is the guardrails were actually, the guardrail supports were welded to pieces that were embedded in the bridge. Those broke and that moved out. And the bridge itself is structurally sound. It's fine. And that whole guardrail course is gonna be removed, replaced with a new grid, a walkway bridge. That's the bridge he's referring to. Two new supports and a stream, and then the guardrail is gonna be put on the outside. And that walkway is gonna extend from Main Street past the railroad sign up through across all those properties and then curve into the, into the beach where the natural walking path is. And hopefully that's gonna get started pretty soon. I actually asked her today about it to get us an update on when that's gonna start.
Yeah, last thing that was supposed to start probably right about now, mid-July, mid to third week of July, there were waitings. They began first to wait until after the beach party, which was originally scheduled for the third, but they also, I believe, put their, all their employees take vacation, like the first two weeks of July. So I believe that that should be starting, but I thought that they were gonna start on North Main first and I know our engineer was up on North Main today talking with one of the property owners up there. So I know that it's starting.
And I'll elaborate on that for the rest of the board also. It's 84 or 86 North Main Street. The Semino's?
Semino.
Semino's, thank you. I can never get that name right. They have a very large rock retaining wall in front of their property. Been there for must be 50, 60, 70 years, long time, mainly. And unfortunately, originally, they were gonna try to just move the sidewalk out a little bit, make it a little narrower and just go by it. Unfortunately, the, the rock wall is cracked and leaning out and probably will fall over in the next year or two. So I have asked her to talk with the Semino's and find out what we can do to at least remove that wall and grade, grade the the bank back. Might be graded rather steeply, but it's, it's dangerous to leave it there and just fix the sidewalk.
And so Keith was there this afternoon with Rob Crew, our engineer, and they talked to Mr. Semino and they are going to be taking the wall down and then just grading it out, smoothing it out. And they're all in agreement on that.
This is across the street from Tex Tech? No, it's, it would be, oh, thousand feet this way towards the old Lewiston Road. Be three houses before the old North Mammoth School building. Three or four. It's a retaining wall that goes not up, but down to the property. So it separates the front of the property from the road. I know, it's Hartford's. It's right, isn't it right next door to the school? No, I think it's two or three houses down. Geez, I walked it, I walked that sidewalk. I don't know how many times I've run as a kid. Anyway, yeah.
Just a couple last things on the list. There are revenues at the bottom and one of those is the savings from the Gilman Packard loan proceeds. That's going to be applied to the debt payment this year. Because of that, that's going to not be calculated into the mill rate. So that'll reduce what we would have to ask for that. And the other is the building account that we created with the sale of Petrel Schools. That money is sitting there. Spoken for somewhat, 30,000 for playground and then the rest of it to the middle, the former middle school. We're carrying those revenues forward.
I'll move we carry these forward with the exception of the part-time wages. Return that 35,000 plus to the general fund.
I just have a, a question on, on that. If, if, if the demo prices are gonna be beyond what we've budgeted, budgeted for this year, doesn't it not make sense to carry that forward for demo? Or have we, you know, we are anticipating more demo?
That's not going to impact the cost of, of covering the cost of demo. We have a different line for that. This is just part-time wages, so. You know, if the board feels that you don't want to carry those forward, we can live with that.
Then I'll second.
This is a motion by Tim and a second by Harold to approve the carryforward list, except with that exception. All those in favor? Those opposed? And next is the warrant number one.
Checks over $1,000. Andrew Scott and Ben, this is for the Academy Sidewalk Loan Payment, $16,321.63. Angela Varnum, this is payment in lieu of health insurance, $5,858.58. Blue Rock Earthworks Transfer Station Trips, $2,225. Public Sea Watershed District, yearly assessment or part of it, $16,214.33. Leonard Crocker, payment in lieu of health insurance, $1,677.83. DR Designs LLC for beach uniform shirts and beach passes, $1,430.88. Dana Westling, payment in lieu of health insurance, $5,858.58. Dennis K. Burke for fuel, $1,489.34. Dennis Price, payment in hell, in lieu of health insurance, $1,677.83. Easy Rent All Core, this is to rent the trailer that we, that was under the excavator. We needed to move the excavator around that we rented last month before we were able to pass the ballot question. And just a note on that, they're not charging us for rental of the excavator. They're only doing, charging us for the rental of the trailer. That's $1,500. Eagle Maine for recycling, $2,088.10. GDI Services for janitorial services, $3,050. Primal Industries Bulk Waste and Demo, $3,909.60. High Output Incorporated, this is.
High Output Incorporated, this is for Comston Hall Light Upgrades in the theater area. Thirty-two thousand, five hundred twelve dollars, fifty cents. This was part of the voter approved capital improvement plan for comes to this year. Kenve- Kenveck Valley Council of Governments Membership Due, six thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars. Kenveck Valley Humane Society Animal Control Third Quarter Fee, one thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars, twenty cents. Kirk Barkman, payment in lieu of health insurance, five thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars, fifty-eight cents. Maine Municipal, Maine Municipal Association Property and Casualty Insurance, twenty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Monmouth Sanitary District for Sewer Service, one thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. Pine Tree Engineering for engineering services for the Beach Maple and North Main sidewalks, four thousand, five hundred eight dollars. Regional School Unit Number Two, this is our first payment for the new budget, school, school appropriation. Four hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars, thirty-three cents. Santander Bank N A, this is S C B A lease payment, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars, eighty-one cents. Donna Shaw, payment in lieu of health insurance, one thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars, eighty-three cents. Todd Sears, payment in lieu of health insurance, one thousand, six hundred seventy-seven dollars, eighty-three cents. Treasurer State of Maine for motor vehicle plates, titles, V's, six thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, eighty-five cents. Vision Government, this is our web hosting for our assessing, seven thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars. And Laura Walker, payment in lieu of health insurance, five thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars, fifty-eight cents.
The Vision Government, that's just, that's, that's the yearly payment, right?
Yes.
For those folks at home, could you update us on what's happened with the RSU budget and? What the process is? I, I see we're making a substantial payment with this one.
Last Friday evening, the RSU Board had its, had an emergency meeting. To discuss how to proceed with the fifty-five percent funding. Standards to education, which I believe is the first time ever maybe that it's been a fifty-five percent. What to do with the additional funding that would be coming to the RSU and the board voted to distribute that back to the towns. To save on the mill rate. And so we received a decrease. Well, our increase is only about two hundred twenty-two thousand as opposed to four hundred ninety-two thousand. Which is much better on the mill rate than what we originally expected. So. And I'm. Mister McDonald's over there calculating what the mill rate might be.
Well, I already got, I mean, I just was double checking. If I might just add, we also did receive some more money in revenue sharing. About a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth, I think, more than what we expected. And because of the warrant question that. Linda had the foresight to ask us to put on, we can apply it to this year's mill rate. All in all, the school mill, the school increase is about half a mil versus one point one mils. So that's a much better. Outcome than we had thought. Depending on what the revenue sharing is and how the other things shake out. The increase should be. Right around there or less, I hope. The only thing that I did want to point out is. I feel if. If the schools had tightened their belt a little more and been a little more responsible, we might actually be. Giving the taxpayers a zero increase or a slight decrease in their taxes, which almost never happens. But we have done it twice in the last ten years.
I think. The difference between our, our last year, we, I think we were paying four hundred and thirty thousand a, a, a month. This year, you said it was four. Four hundred and forty-five?
Forty-nine.
Yeah.
Four forty-nine.
The monthly payment?
No.
Four forty-nine.
Four forty, okay.
It was going to be forty-five.
Okay.
And so, so, so the, just for the folks at home who are listening, the rate of increase is not a nine percent increase, it's a. A four and a half percent increase. Give or take.
Okay.
Right, but when we were voting on it, we expected, we expected and we're, we're handed a nine percent increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was the unsustainable figure.
Yeah. So once we have all the figures in from the assessor for property values and personal property, Betty, all of that. Homestead exemption money, then we'll be able to.
So I move, we approve warrant number one.
Second.
So it's a motion by Chris, the second by Keith, uh, by Keith. To approve our warrant number one. All those in favor? Thank you. And next is a, some work sessions. First thing. There is the old Monmouth Academy, the next steps.
If I might be allowed to hand out some materials I've worked on today.
Did you want one?
Okay. Few times. A bunch of times. Or more, yeah.
I'll explain everything here as soon as everybody gets their materials. Some, is this, is this the outstanding wings in the town? Is that what this is?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I gave you the original list with the ones who have paid.
Are they lined up?
Yeah. Thought that might be easier than you having to go back and forth to your old list.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just wanted to start by saying. We need to do three things concurrently right off the bat. And, and number one is issuing RFP for architectural services. I drafted. One, which should cover most of the stuff. We'd have to run it by legal. And then make any adjustments at the next meeting before we issued it on the twenty, on the twenty-ninth of July, which is what I, I put in there for. The issue date. The reason we need to get it done is if we look at a timeline of retaining an architect. You have to have generally a pre-proposal meeting date, which is usually optional, but it's in there for August the fourth. Questions, if they have questions, they, they bought the proposal or the information packet. They get back to us and we have to get back to them. There has to be a date for submission, then we have to make a response, interview preliminary candidates. And award a contract. So. That would be, interviews would be done by the building committee. And even if everything goes really well, the earliest we'd award a contract is. Around the second week of August. Now, when that happens, then. That architect has to. Finish doing his design work. He has to contact. Contractors and subcontractors. And I, I talked to somebody. The other day who. Has a large multimillion dollar. Brick building, laying business. They look at several RFPs a week. And they told me that right now, the usual one week waiting time for responses for subcontractors and contractors. Is three to four weeks. So. The very earliest we could be ready to start doing anything to that building. Probably would be. The middle of October. Now, I'm of a mind, we want to get certain things done this year to that building. So that it doesn't get in worse shape and cost us more money to do it. And those things would be. The foundation, fixing the walls where the additions are removed. And then. Doing the roof. Interior of the building could wait till next year. Possibly even some of the site work could wait until next year. But if we let that building get into worse condition, it will cost us more to work on it. And we are working against a deadline. It does take a lot of time and effort to do these things. In the.
Before you go on any further, Tim, you, you mentioned the earliest we could start doing anything. Would be the, the second week of August. You really meant second week of September, right?
Oh, no, actually, I meant second week of October. I'm sorry.
All right, good.
You know, after, after, because we wouldn't finalize an architect and all the design, you know. Authorize him to do the design work until the first or second week in September. And then they're going to, then optimistically, they're going to be a month at least. So that puts us in the middle of October before we can realistically start. Any work on that building.
And just realistically, I don't think we'll get a contractor scheduled to do anything for six to ten months.
It's very possible. We may not be able to do anything though as print.
Now, that doesn't mean that we can't, once, once we, we, which, which I agree with your timeline here is completely, but. If we get a. Contract, bid to a contractor awarded, then we might be able to, to have the contractor look at what. What need remediation or what temporary work needed to be done to get us through the winter, if, even if that meant tarping the roof. Or, or some other necessary thing to make sure it didn't fall down.
Well, in actuality, I think actually the architect will tell us that. They'll tell us the schedule of work, what order it should be in and what to do and when to do it. And that will fall in with, with, you know, trying to get that contractor. And who knows, we may luck out and get a contractor. I think you're probably more likely correct. That we're going to have a hard time getting a contractor. They're having hard times, very hard times finding people to work right now. Especially up here in the Northeast. I did want to point out that I also included concept drawings of the basement. The first floor and the second floor. That was done gratis for us by an architect. Very cheap, very generously donated his time.
What, that wasn't free. We paid for that. The arch, is this the architect from the?
Oh, we did. You told me that he made the drawings.
No, we paid for it.
Okay.
These were done while the committee was putting together a plan, right?
Towards the end, yeah. The one thing I do want to point out is in the basement. The front wall and the sidewall that's over where the ledge is, doesn't exist. That's part of the foundation that has to be created and repaired because the old academy, the front part of it basically sits on pillars. Under the next page here, the next handout says renovating Monmouth Academy. I say, of course, I just discussed issuing an RFP. The next one is establishing a fundraising committee. I think that's paramount to get that going immediately. And I, I think that one of our select people has a lot of ideas for that. And will be of, of great help in getting that going. And I previously mentioned that. I wanted to be the first one. To promise a donation and I. Pledged two hundred dollars, my wife and I, and I would challenge everyone else listening and everyone else in this board to do the same or more. Then we need to start a building committee. I would like to invite the members from the school reuse task force. They spent. Two, two and a half years working on this. They're very familiar with everything we discussed. All the pitfalls we looked at, all the pluses we looked at, the engineering reports and. They were a very diverse group of people from, from. Citizens who've been involved with the school to. Business owners who have done this type of work before, to historians. People that have a lot of knowledge about Monmouth Academy. I want to limit that committee to seven people. As I found out, and I think we all found out. If the committee's too big, people don't show up anyway. And you end up with a lot of. Chitter chatter back and forth and sometimes have a little bit of difficulty moving forward. I would like to shoot for us having the first meeting of this building committee on August the second. In this packet, I've included some pictures of Monmouth Academy. The very first one is from what I understand to be the original brick building that was built after the wooden building burned. We can notice that there's no portico or porch on the front and there's no little wings on the back and no second floor. The second picture is actually a. Cutout of the property with a white square around the section that. We told the taxpayers who voted on this was the section we wished to save. We thought was the most economical and reasonable to do. The next page shows a couple of pictures. The very first picture was. In nineteen fifty-three, when they started the construction of one of the wings on Monmouth Academy. Construction. Practices were a little different back then, as you can see. The next picture, and I didn't realize it until I started doing this research, I, I guess I should have known. Was the portico or the porch was actually designed by Henry, Harry Cochran and put on in nineteen forty-one. And the last picture that I have there is a picture of Monmouth Academy as I have been able to, to deduce it was. Before nineteen forty-one with the two side wings and the second, or part of the, and the second floor. And not the front portico, the front porch.
Because you entered through the side.
That's, yeah, it looked like.
Right where the A room, where the A wing went, goes.
And the, and the stairs came down.
Exactly.
I think the stairs were right.
Right there, yes.
The other thing I, I included in the back for, for. Continuity sake was the notes about the facility condition index. The eighteen fifty-six building is a point nine five facility condition index. As we learned before, generally, they consider point two five to point three beyond reasonable repair. All the other buildings aren't as bad. This building is, is the worst. However, this building is the one that has the great sentimental value for everyone. So fortunately. In discussing it, looking at it, doing all the research we did, it would seem that the foundation underneath the parts that are, do have a foundation. The brick walls, the roof rafters, the other. Interior beams and things are structurally sound. I did include some notes that the, that the engineer had made about. Parts of the structure and, and fire doors, exit signage, some of the things that are, that are issues. One of the significant things, of course, is no fire alarm system and no sprinklers. Those have to be added to bring it up to code. The next one is the school reuse summary that we put out to the public. Telling them what we were going to do with this building and I believe. Made a great deal of difference in how people voted, just to save that building. This is what we told them we were going to do. And the last page is some of the history of, of some of the things we talked about in that two years. There was many more things than that, but a lot of things were discussed, a lot of things were considered. It was a, it was a long and difficult prod, process to get to this point. And, and a lot of people put in a lot of hours, a lot of time. To figure out what was the most economical thing for the town and based on what. The sentiment was for the, for the existing structure. The last, very last page is actually a page of, of a, the floor plan for the existing structure. That I got from the RSU back along, just kind of gives you the, the layout of the building. Hopefully that, that gives everyone some, some help in, in what I have been looking at and hopefully what the committee has been doing. I will put this out there also. If we use about two hundred thousand from the sale of the Cattrall School and, and hopefully we can raise at least, let's. and hopefully we can raise at least, let's say, 500,000 in donations. I'm hoping it'll be more, of course, but depending on how that goes, a $1 million bond for 15 years at three and a half percent is about a little less, a little shy of an $87,000 a year payment. If we get that bond outside of the bond bank, that's why the interest rate would be a little higher, but it does allow us to pay it off sooner. So fundraising efforts could continue, and if we get more significant funds, we can make extra payments on that and not have to, not be restricted to keeping it for 15 years and paying all the interest. Questions?
I've got one, Tim, you mentioned that there was concern about the foundation in the ledge area of the 1856 structure.
Yeah, there isn't any.
This, this, this perimeter here.
Yeah, not, not the whole, the left wall and the front wall is on, is, doesn't, isn't there and it's on posts. And there's, there's, you know, basically some insulation or whatever, wouldn't whatnot stuffed in there to stop the flow of air, but it's still pretty drafty down there.
So the, the, the brick fish has stayed.
Yes.
Together and it's basically using the ledge as a foot.
Yes, because it's built on ledge, there's a huge piece of granite under there that it's sitting on, which is pretty commonplace
Yeah.
in the state of Maine.
Well, for the, for the time period.
Well, but also, you know, there's a lot of ledge around and, and if you look at any of that brickwork on the original portion, it's in far better shape than any of the mortar work on any of the other more recent portions.
Gotcha.
Because.
Because it's built on ledge.
It, it also craftsmanship and, and it was just a very different way of doing things.
Well, I think they probably made this cement a little different.
Well, not only that, but I mean, it's, it's, it, it's pretty amazing, you know, when, when you have somebody that looks at mortars and joints and you're not seeing any huge cracks, I think, and even around the, the lintels and, and around the window ledges, it's pretty amazing how that building actually is in, you know, it stood the test of time, so.
Have you been in the cellar?
Yes.
I was talking to, yeah, I know you that.
I, I think, you know, one of the things that we need to think about is, is putting some people on the committee that have some experience with in town that have commercial construction and experience or things like that. Sometimes when you put the same people back on this, on a committee that have been on there, the analysis by paralysis or paralysis by analysis, whatever, we need to come up with some, some new ideas, since the committee, the previous committee, we've had surveys done online and, and at the polls, so we know what the townspeople are looking for and what direction the town wants to see their money spent. So some of the ideas that were thought aren't the same ideas that people are wanting us to move forward with, you know, with recreation and having a space to congregate, that's new information, that wasn't available. So when we're coming up for a plan for reuse, you know, looking at what the town answered in the survey, I think we had a, a school teacher that is new to town that wanted to be, you know, or said that she was willing to help with this, you know, looking at new members and getting some fresh new ideas, I think probably is a, is an avenue to really investigate, not putting the same people back, talk about the same things that they talked about for two years.
Well, I don't think, I don't think everybody's gonna want to come back, but I was thinking specifically of Dawn Hodgson, who has construction experience. And I was thinking of Larry Boosie, who has historical experience.
Those are the people that I was thinking.
And there may be others that want to come back, but I think we need to invite them first and make that consideration.
Yeah, I mean.
And as I stated, Chris, I think that we sold this to people based on the criteria in that list. And while people do want recreation options, and I, I have heard that in numerous surveys throughout the years, I had envisioned that the old administration building would be that recreation space. And it's certainly well suited to it.
Certain, certain types of recreation, I think that, you know, forward thinking and down the road, having some sort of newer facility that is part of the, the original academy where people can, you know, play pickleball or have a men's league basketball team since, you know, it's glaringly apparent the R shoe's not going to always let us use buildings that we pay for. So, you know, having a meeting space where meetings can take place because we, we certainly don't have a lot of that. We have it down here, but it limits the size and if this, and if the, the a ninth, class of 1985 wanted to have a class reunion, the old library as an indoor space and having the front lawn for tent space to have that type of reunion, you would never be able to do something like that downstairs here and.
Oh, and that's certainly one of the identifying.
What, what in my mind, to be able to look at this and come up with a plan moving forward and having some new fresh ideas and going with that. I didn't think that we were gonna have two committees, I didn't think we were gonna have a fundraising committee and a school reuse committee, I, I was under the impression that we were going to do this as one committee, you know, we were gonna work on fundraising and work on the ideas.
To be honest with you, I think that's very impractical. The amount of work and effort that's gonna have to go into fundraising is gonna be phenomenal.
Well.
And, and there's gonna be quite a bit of interaction between the building committee and the architect. And we have identified those uses of in, you know, rentable space, meeting space, voting space, all those things were identified and presented to the public. And they voted based on those presentations. And I'm presuming that if now we change course and say, oh, we're gonna, you, you voted for this 1.7 million dollar appropriation based on this, but we're gonna do this. I don't think that's a very genuine and, you know, very honest with, with the people who voted for this.
Well.
And like I said, it's a lot of work to fundraise, it's not just a one day a week enterprise or a one day a month enterprise. It's gonna take a substantial amount of effort. And I'm still pursuing, looking at county and looking at the state programs that might provide us some grants for shelter and voting space and other things that we've lost. And there's, there's a shock there, I don't know how good it's gonna be, but we'll know more by the end of July, when we get more information from the, the people that are gonna be administering those programs and administering the grants.
So the, the first thing that will be done is not to hire somebody to demolish everything except what's gonna be saved. The first, firstly will be to hire an architect.
I, I believe that's the correct step because an architect will tell us in what order to do things for the best value and to preserve the other, to preserve the building we want to preserve. If you tear that down in the wrong order, we could damage the old building.
So would the architect be doing the majority of the work? It's not gonna require a lot of work from the building committee. It will mostly be turned over to an architect. And the, then a group can be, a part of that building committee can do, as Chris said, to work on fundraising while the architect does his part and, and simply determines what, how to go about the demolition and then doing what necessary to keep the building standing, the remaining building.
Well, I, I believe the building committee's gonna need to review architect proposals, help decide who, two or three individuals, if we have multiple companies, hopefully we'll get multiple companies responding and providing proposals. Who they may want to interview, interview further or have us interview. And then when we choose or award the bid, we may give some direction to that committee and say, look, if, if there's questions to be answered from the architect, and there will be, they're going to ask more questions as they get into the designing phases, they have to have someone to go to get answers from. And that would be that committee back to us if necessary.
So what I, what I think I hear Doug saying is that there is some time while we're waiting for the architect to, to organize themselves and, and do some of the planning process and I, I imagine there's probably gonna be a lot of additional time simply because of scarcity of contractors. I'm, I'm of the mind, though, that, you know, the very same voters that approved this based on the proposal, the wonderful proposal that the building committee put before us, those very same voters showed up the voting booth and gave us a, a slightly different version of what they wanted to see in terms of the direction of the community and how this building is used. I don't have an objection to revisiting the potential uses of the building so that we can refine them in a way that is based on the direction of the voters, also based on some of the information that the architect might come back with us in terms of some of the choices that we've got in, in terms of approaches to construction. So, you know, a good architect is gonna come to us with, you know, a, a three or four different possible solutions to solving the problem of preserving this building. And some of them could be spending the entire 1.7 million or some of them could be, here's a, here's a phased in process that allows.
That will be the most likely direction.
Sure.
And if I might interrupt, sorry, in the RFP, it does say, you know, present some different alternatives.
Absolutely.
And I don't expect that we would stick hard and fast to what was presented to the voters, but I would suspect that we should honor the framework of that. There will be changes, there will be considerations, there will be things that we find out as we go along. We may tear down a wall and God knows what we may find in there. So there will be some changes, I'm just trying to present what I think is the logical step forward and trying to take and convey the sense of urgency that I think we should have.
Absolutely.
So, so, excuse me, I just, in the interest of, of, because I think we're getting bogged down a little bit.
First off, I think we should move forward with, with establishing the, the building committee so that the building committee can flesh out some of these ideas and issues and concerns. I don't think we, we need to have a great discussion about them tonight. But I also want to address Chris's thoughts about recreation, that there isn't enough space in this floor plan.
No, there isn't.
So, so the, the one, the one thing that this floor plan does have is, is barely adequate space to, to conduct, conduct the elections in the, in the multipurpose room that's, that's laid out here. Now, it may be that as the building committee moves forward and, and discussions with the architect, they may decide that, hey, we can expand the multipurpose room into a, a part of the, of the adjacent structure and give us more room to do some other things that, that could be incorporated when it's not being used for elections or other things that, that maybe it could be used for indoor tennis or it could be, you know, used for some other things that, that help with that recreation aspect.
I don't see the old academy being used, you know, as a pickleball court, I see it as a meeting space and, you know, something where people can meet and have, you know, cricket tournaments or, you know, you know, lots of things like that. You know, and where people could go and do yoga or, because those sorts of things could be done there. But, but I think we have to, we need to have, hit a refresh and say, okay, we need to come up with what the voters are wanting, because we knew, have some new surveys and come up with some, some ideas, but also seek people that are interested in being on it and also offer some, some fresh ideas.
So with that in mind, go ahead, Linda.
I was just gonna, if I could, with all due respect, because the conversation here is, is starting to sound like the building committee's conversation that needs to be taken.
Exactly.
Thank you, Harold, for jumping in there and offering that, I think.
But if I might interrupt everybody, we all interrupted Ted.
Yes.
And I think we should let him finish his thought.
I, I think Harold actually summarized what I was about to say, and I appreciate that. And my question for Harold is, how many folks on the building committee would you want to see?
I would like to see no more than five.
Yeah, I thought seven, but whatever.
I think if you get beyond five, that you, you get into a, a potential gridlock and paralysis by analysis type of situation.
Linda, so, let me see, like, can we have some idea of what we're gonna have for building committee by our next meeting?
That is up to you, that, that's what I was hoping to get from you this evening. How do you want to go about inviting people to be on this committee, who do you want? What are you looking for, for the members of this committee to bring as strength? I think you, obviously you want someone who's got some construction background because I think that will help guide the committee with decisions about who gets hired first and, and a better understanding about, you know, putting things out to bid, because it's not just putting out an RP for an architect, the architect will then have to turn around and do an RP for demo and all of that stuff. So you have to think about what types of backgrounds you want people on this committee to be bringing with them to make it a strong move.
Well, as I said previously, I thought I would like to see Dawn Hodgson on there for her construction experience and Larry Boosie for his historical experience. Other members that were on the other committee may have some value, I'll leave that up to the rest of you. So what's the timeline for establishing the committee? Because obviously your, your timeline for putting it on an RFP for an architect doesn't allow for the building committee to be able to do that because it hasn't been established yet. So is the board going to ask Linda to put out an RFP for an architect?
Well, I did, I did include a draft RFP, which I think hit all the, hit all the points that are necessary, plus the timeline. It needs to go through legal, it needs for us to read it and make any adjustments that need to be made at our next meeting so it can be issued on the 29th. I would like to see us extend the invitation to any of the committee members for the building committee tomorrow that we decide on. And if we don't decide on five of them or seven, whichever way the committee, this committee wants to go, the board wants to go, we need to advertise and hopefully have candidates by our next meeting so we can establish that committee at the next meeting and then have the first meeting on August the second. And discuss this RFP that went out, among other things. There's also a line in the RFP, which is fairly standard, it says, we reserve the right to request a subsequent change and any changes will reflect it in the final agreement. That's a pretty standard thing and everybody needs to know that who bids on it. So obviously, whoever you, whoever we end up choosing, if there are subsequent changes afterwards, before we sign an agreement with them, they'll have to make the appropriate adjustments to their fee.
So my, my concern, I have two concerns, is first that the right. So my my concern, I have two concerns is first that the right rightfully so, we need to get moving on. An RFP for an architect, so you're gonna deliver that proposal to Linda, she delivers it to Don's attorney. Gets reviewed and a request goes out, does that fit with you?
If if that's, if we think that hiring an architect is the very first move, I don't know that that is.
Well, an architect would not be hired until the middle of September, and the longer we wait, the longer it takes.
No, I'm just, I'm my, what I'm saying is, I'm not, I'm not sure, because I'm not a building person, if. An architect is the first person, I do know that the person who did this was not looking at the outside structural part of it, he was only looking at laying out.
The floor plan, I understand.
Right, well, you you have to have uh architectural uh drawings in order to for contractor to quote, so. There's absolutely no question, you have to do architect first. Um cause that's what, that's what the contractor is gonna base their quota.
If that's what you want me to do, then I can send this over to our attorney tomorrow and.
I don't know anything about construction, just a school teacher, I, but anyway, oh. So but to me, it makes, shouldn't we be hiring some construction person? Uh or or. Who does this sort of thing?
Like a clerk of the works?
Yeah, right.
Well, that's what the you you, again, the first order of business is always to to get your building plan, your architectural drawings done, what you want to construct. That's always first. Next is to hire either a general, in this case, it would be a general contact contractor. And then that general contractor works with the architect. To move on what needs to be done and what order it needs to be done on, and and in my viewpoint, the building committee would would work with both. To make sure that it's being done the way it's supposed to be done and approve any changes, so when you build a. Say you build a residential house and you hire a or a general contractor to do the. The building, you you settle on a design first. And then as you go through the building process, if you decide that. Uh before the next stage of building occurs, that you wanna make a change to the plan, then you you design that change. There's a a form that's filled out that that agrees to the change, whatever.
Change order.
Yeah, a change order that that, you know, stipulates what the additional price would be if there's any and what what's going to be done, and then you move forward in that. In that process, so.
But we're not doing that.
Yeah.
No, we're not building a house.
We're. Yeah, we are, we're building a town's house.
We, there's a building there that w- w- we're going to, uh you know, demolish part of the whole structure and keep part of it. So i- isn't there somebody who would uh know what, h- how to go about this, like who's done this before?
Well, I also believe Douglas that the state of main statutes require all public buildings to be designed by an architect.
Yeah, there's, there's no way around this, no way around.
Well, I don't know, I, whatever, uh. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, okay. Should we just move, so for our next, uh to first for our next meeting, what we're gonna decide on? Oh, we're gonna decide to create a building committee?
It it would be great if we could appoint the building committee at the next meeting, so we can get moving on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if you wanna have that first meeting the first week of August.
So maybe we can officially announce that we are entertaining applications for the building.
For the building committee. And then you you will need to decide if you're going to limit it to five or seven people and you get ten or fifteen.
Yes.
How you're going to whittle those down, which is a discussion coming up in a little while, too, about how to deal with applications to boards and committees.
So they, I think people would fill out the application like we use for when, you know, like when the library trustee is appointed. And what their background is and what they're interested is and why they wanna be on it, and then we would, you know. Evaluate those and have some discussion and decide who we want on it, but I guess the thing that I want to clear about is, are we having a building committee and a fundraising committee? Are we having two separate committees that?
Again, I I would, I would urge us to do two separate committees, and that's my. Uh thought, and that would be my vote, but it's up to the rest of you.
Is it, is it possible to find out uh from um. Find somebody who's done this sort of thing, who's, you know, had a structure like what we have. And that has, does what we're planning to do, so that we could uh. Guess, you know, have them maybe tell us, how how should we go about doing this, or how should the building committee go about doing?
So you would like me to reach out to some other communities who had a building committee and how they did it?
North Yarmouth, I mean, they did this for their old school, and I'm sure there's plenty others out there.
I can do that, in the meantime, do you want me to put something out on our Facebook page? That we're looking for applications for anyone who's interested in being on the building committee?
Yeah, I think it needs to be in the community advertiser this Friday.
I don't.
It may not know a lot of those.
They'll get there.
It'll have to be next Friday.
So, yes, Kelvin.
I think in the situation that we have, where we have an old building that we wanna remodel and make it into something. We need to hire a company that does design build. You guys are stuck on an architect, okay, the architect goes over there and he makes his plan and then he gives it to the contractor. And then the change orders are gonna roll in, you go see a design build company. And they design it and you get an agreement with them and then they build it and they have a set fee. You've got some local contractors right here in Lewiston, A G Callahan's one of them, you can call them up. They'll come out and look at it. I don't understand why you wanna uh do it the hard way.
I, well, I didn't know we're doing it the hard way, I, it seems.
This is our first time doing it, so this is the first time we've had to do a project like this, so we're all in a learning curve.
I've done this for my whole life, I know how to do this kind of stuff. You get a design build company to come in and do the job.
Tim, can you review the statute, the, the, cause you've said that the the state statute requires arch.
I I didn't look it up, I just know it's there, I'll have to look it up.
Well, it may be possible to A G Callahan has an architect.
Eh eh, well, right, but I'm just saying.
That they do, and certainly we would ask them for design services.
Any design build company has an in-house architect.
Okay, so.
Yes.
And the structural engineer, which has to come right along, that's what's gonna tell you whether the building. Is safe or unsafe, whether it needs a whole new foundation or not, this is the structural engineer stuff. That's what a design build company is gonna bring for you. Here you have somebody for your building. There you go.
Uh is it possible that we could also invite uh folks to apply for the fundraising committee as well? Or a combination of the two, if it turns out to be a slightly larger committee of seven, say, that's both fundraising and building that.
Uh yeah, see, for I. Somebody who focus on fundraising as well as somebody who will focus on the.
Well, I think like, again, I think that's very necessary, just if you stop and think about trying to raise half a million dollars. You've gotta get twenty-five hundred responses from people on average of two hundred dollars a piece to get. Generally, if you send out uh twenty-five hundred letters, you're gonna get a ten fifteen percent response. So we're gonna be sending out ten thousand letters and ten thousand asks and ten thousand mailings, so that's a lot of work.
It's already, it 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 has to be looked up to the fundraising committee what they're wanna do, what they.
I I understand, I'm just saying that to raise that kind of money, it's a lot of work.
Sometimes there's also an interaction between how the building is designed or where people might be going.
That's right, so I think there has to be some communication between the the fundraising and the building because. They're gonna wanna know what's going on, you know, and where we are with that, and if we have a a fundraising page and a a website, which is. What my great hope is that we'd have some sort of link on the town website that would take us to the the um. Old academy rebuild or renovation where people could make donations, see what the plans are, see the progress. See, you know, instead of having it on Center Street in Auburn, when United Way is fundraising, have a have the thermometer getting filled up. On a website, so people could see where we are with that and be able to make Venmo payments or PayPal payments and that sort of thing.
So I would. Yes, well, I just wanna get going.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too, me too, so what I was gonna suggest is that that's. The 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 money, the fundraising part of it can be uh decided, first of all, we need to appoint the building committee. And then if the building committee has a person on it that's willing to lead the fundraising effort, then you can develop a subcommittee. That would appoint people to that subcommittee that would handle the the fundraising, so you could. Start out with the initial building committee and then at some point. You can decide whether that committee has people on it willing to do the extra work, or you need to have a subcommittee and somebody leads that subcommittee. So that's.
I think that sounds, that's the perfect idea.
That might be a way to go, is just have a subcommittee of the building committee to do fundraising.
Yes.
And then not everybody on the fu- uh not everybody on the building committee is gonna wanna.
Yes.
Put in a time and effort to do fundraising, cause it's it's a, it's a huge undertaking.
So I, so I agree with Doug, we should move forward, so can we just agree now that we're going to?
Do the building committee.
Yeah, and we're gonna put out the request?
Yeah.
And and uh. Do you have enough to go on, Linda?
I do, I do, and I'll reach out and get some some information from some other communities as well, cause that won't hurt.
Right, a- a- and and follow what Kelvin has suggested, see if.
Well, on the front of that RFP page, you could say. Um architect or design build, or a RFP for architect or design build services.
Okay, so.
Input as possible.
Okay, Dawn, in your, like, I keep, in your experience, is this, is this where we're headed, anything?
The design build is, I've done a lot of those, work with people who've done a lot of those in group for something like this, because. Quite honestly, I know in design build, they they say this is what's gonna happen, but you open up that building, there's going to be changes.
Yes.
It's just that's, nobody knows what's going on in there until you open it up. Um a design build can do that, you also can accomplish that same thing with with an architectural firm, structural engineering firm. That work cooperatively, that, you know, have tackled renovations before, it's it's, there's. We have worked with different companies that have done both, that are general contractors, that are design builders, architects. That hire structural engineers that handle a sizable project, so I think making it as big a scope as possible. Design, design build, general um architects, whatever, um you're gonna get. A lot more to choose from, and then at the level of the committee or the or this this group. Decide which way you wanna go, cause they're going to give you the proposal, they're gonna give you an estimated timeline, but but they think. They would then ultimately ask us to price.
So so are we headed, will Linda be doing the right thing?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, get out there, but I wouldn't limit it to, you know, architect or design.
Do both.
Exactly.
Cause you're casting a wider net.
Yeah, and you're going to get more information to choose from.
Okay.
And include an instructional uh instructional, yeah, given like.
Structural.
A structural engineer, thank you.
Yeah, I like question engineer, they they, you know, they're structural engineers. And they they do design build, but they can also offer architectural services, so. There's, there's lots to choose from, so cast a net wide.
Okay.
Are you out to the engineering?
No, we're we're probably same tree, different branch, yeah, yeah, we've worked with with Alan Hissman quite a bit. And A G Callahan worked with with this team repeatedly, and they do both, they're general contractor and they do design build, so. I think you're gonna find combinations.
Good, thank you, so can we move on to the?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure before you move on that I've got everything that you want me to do, I'm going to advertise on Facebook and in the. Community advertiser, hopefully, that we're looking for uh people who are interested in serving on the building committee. Do I wanna mention that we're looking for particular skills, fundraising background, self.
Exactly, cause if we have people that want to be on the fundraising part, but not the building part, I mean, I think if we're gonna advertise, we might as well put both. The wording in there.
Well, why don't I put in in, I'll write something up, you know, run it by you and. And we'll try to get some people with some of the backgrounds that we're looking for, and then maybe they do splinter off and somebody else. You get someone who does fundraising and pulls more people with them and they do that, and then you also want me to tweak this. RFP that Tim has done to include some of the things that Dawn has mentioned, so then we cast a wide net, run it by legal, I'm good on this, okay?
Okay. Uh uh, oh, I was, all right, can we go to the playground?
Please.
Are we leaving the building?
We're leaving the building.
Let's go to the playground.
That was my favorite part of school.
Recession.
So.
I'm, okay, so uh we, we obviously have a thirty thousand dollar approval from the voters for a playground. Uh to go at the beach, and so we will have to, because of the purchasing policy, uh do an RFP for bids for the playground. But we have to know exactly what we're looking for, I don't know if you wanna go with what we uh previously, what Tim had brought forward. Before the end of, before the, before we put the budget together, um that drawing, if we wanna go with that. I can put on another.
I think that was what was presented to people and that's what they. I'm pretty sure that's what they voted on, they wanted to see that type of, I mean, it doesn't have to be hard and fast, exactly that, but. It needs to be substantially that and that type of 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 uh of playground equipment, non-rusting, uh cushioned and. You know, all the, all the various things that are up the code for this, you know, day and age.
And same dimensions.
Yeah, no, no bigger.
Okay.
I mean, that was one of the things we told everybody, it was gonna be the same footprint as what is there. We didn't wanna take any more space because it's a fairly limited area.
We have a gentleman here who did most of the work.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be good to to talk with Kelvin.
But I think.
Make sure that what you're putting out there meets what they had, uh people.
And I, and Kelvin actually gave me the specs on the playground as well, is it going where the swing set is now, is that the intent?
That's what we told everybody, I don't see why it wouldn't be any different, there's really no place else to put it.
No, no.
Calvin, is that, is that reasonable? To locate where the swing set is?
I think it's uh within a couple feet, here or there, uh because over time, that uh. Grass is infringed upon the uh, the playground surface there, and uh. So if you really go out there and uh look for, you know, twenty years ago remnants where it was. It's a little bit bigger than what you see right now, but it's in that that space, it occupies that space. I think the biggest one was uh the length, it kinda is gonna be clo- close to that woods. Uh area uh over there, but I think the width fits in the to. The encroachment upon the grass now, if I, if I remember everything according to, it's been a while since we did that, so.
And as and as I recall, Calvin put a lot of effort into it, and I double checked it with the engineering drawings that I had from when the. Uh parking lot and uh pavilion were put in. Um it's a hundred feet from the water, it's a little more than a hundred feet from the water's edge.
Is that hundred foot mark, you gotta be uh behind that, uh so that controls the how close to the beach it is. Um and the other thing that controls the the width is that on the uh. Where we built a cabana, I call it the cabana, the the roof, I don't know what it is.
Pavilion.
Pavilion, I think we've been over it for.
Okay, civilian, uh there's a little bit of a slope coming off of that, and so we're right to the toe of that slope. Uh to get this uh thing in, uh but on the end of that. Unit that I had proposed, uh it was like the slide would end up at that toe of the slope, so it wasn't a big issue. Uh you know, and then uh they have, when you buy these things, they have uh. Very strict rules about how much uh playground material you have around it or the size and everything, so. I uh adjusted it the best I could to get that in there. Uh so, you know, it's it's a matter of, I guess, if you wanted to have it a little smaller and. So, you know, it's, it's a matter of, I guess if you wanted to have it a little smaller in length, you're gonna throw away a swings, a couple swings there. But I think if you wanna include the older kids, that's why we put the swings in there. Because there's a big age group that uses the swings. Okay, and the other kind of play group is for the younger kids, obviously, they're the ones you go and see who uses this stuff, the younger kids are the ones that love those players.
Who will be making the decisions about exactly what's gonna be purchased? And then the, putting it in place and so forth, and doing all the work that's involved in.
Oh, but it, we'll, you know, see what we can get for, when we put out the RP, I think we need to put it out not only for the structure, but also for the labor, and see if they can break it down into two, so that if we, I can't say that the public works department can install this. I think that we've gotta go out and get professional people who do playgrounds.
Exactly, because I think of the liability part of that as well. I mean, it has to be installed by people that do playgrounds for a living and know the safety zones and know what needs to be there, because that's the biggest and most important part. And they have enough to do public works, not to be there installing something they've never, ever done before.
I can put, you know, I've got the photo that Tim gave us all several months ago, and I can just scan that and send it all to everyone too, if you wanna take a look at it, but I think that basically is what will fit there. And there are a couple playground companies that I know of, one of the ones that did the playgrounds that already exist in town will probably bid on it, I would imagine. But, yeah, I mean, it'll basically, once you know, we know where it's going, we're taking the swings out, it will be up to the installers to place it properly and do the fill that Kelvin's talking about that's around it.
Something else I'll point out too is the playground in behind the old administration building is probably coming up on end of life in six or seven years. Uh, when was that, then, two thousand and six? But in any event, it's, I, I actually have the dates on the plans. I have the original plans that were, were given to me, and I'm gonna give them to Linda to put in the town office, I keep forgetting to do it. But that will tell us when it was put in, and they have a twenty-five year effective life. The twenty-five year effective life is because of changing codes, deterioration of the materials, and so on and so forth. So at some point, when that playground does reach end of life behind that area, we will probably have to remove it. Just so it won't be dangerous to, to the people that use it.
We'd have to replace it.
Actually, we don't have to replace the playground, we just have to, according to Mr. Beck, who did the original grant, because we, we talked to him at great length and, with the committee. And we just have to maintain access to that spot twenty-four hours a day in perpetuity as a recreation area, whether it's a basketball court or whatever.
Okay, can we?
But anyway, about your lifetime, I did expect that, and it's in pretty good shape right now, and the town did a few repairs of that. I think the only thing up there that it needs upgraded is the, the chips.
Okay, okay. So can we go on? You have, you know everything?
I have, yeah.
Okay, and then on to the reconstituted Economic Development Committee.
Again, if I might speak to that. I would like to see us have a committee of five. I would like them to elect their own chair, I do not wanna be chair of that committee. I want, I, I would certainly advise them, and I would like to give them an actual task or goal, and that first goal would be to get a good restaurant in town.
Couldn't make a recommendation, maybe give you an update as well. So I have an appointment next week, we're not getting any response to the ad for a part-time economic development administrator. But I have reached out now to someone who does economic development, that's what they do. They contract out with various communities, I'm meeting with someone next week. I also reached out to the managers group and found out, I can't remember the name of it, but it's a growth council that you can also contract with to do economic development services. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to get this economic development person on board who might be able to advise us on pulling committee together, rather than doing it before we get the economic development assistance. I mean, we still have the same goal, we want a restaurant, yeah.
The only thing that I can say to that is, we've had K.V. Cog come down numerous times and give us presentations. We did use their economic development services, we used their economic development director. The best results we ever got was when we had several motivated people that wanted to do the work. That's the best result.
At one point, I spoke with one of the, you know, companies in town about another topic and, and asked about their family's interest in being on the Economic Development Committee. And even though they, their business is in Monmouth, they aren't residents of Monmouth, but I know that there was some interest with, with those folks, because they own, you know, a, a large business in Monmouth. So I'd like to reach out to them again when we start making these, you know, requests for people that wanna be on economic development, and just reach out to them again. Because if they own a business in town and they're motivated to, to promote Monmouth, to bring more business to town, to help their business, I think that that's definitely an avenue to explore.
Also a reason for maybe waiting a little bit until we get someone on board here, whether it's a contracted person or an employee, is we're getting, we've got a lot on our plates coming up. We're looking to form a couple of different committees, and maybe we get the building committee settled first and start some of these RFPs on the projects, and we've got a little bit of time on the economic development one, and then just wait a little bit on that. By the time you decide to advertise it, even if it's just a month wait, we may have somebody on board who can really help with that effort. And take off with that effort, so that it, it's being done by the economic development person, or at least a large part of it. But it's up to you.
I agree.
I, I agree with that.
Sounds good.
Well, then put it on our agenda for the meeting four weeks from today, to revisit it and advertise for committee members. That doesn't mean people can't apply now, if you do know of someone, Chris, and we can have that interest building. The other thing is I would think we might have put some thought into having and, and how we might approach having people from other towns be on, on the town committee. That, saying that too, I also know that there is going to be a regional committee or meeting by the Winthrop Chamber of Commerce, talking to restaurateurs in the area. They've invited a number of people, I've actually given them a couple of names of people that would be interested and who have owned restaurants and been restaurateurs in the past, to discuss what they like to see in an area and what attracts them for their business. So I am constantly working with the Lakes Region Chamber of Commerce to also promote Monmouth and, and look at those particular things.
Okay, is it, you all said? Okay, then the next thing is a, a, a policy to deal with, or a process, rather, to deal with board and committee appointments. I know, when I was coming in tonight, Ray Simon, who's on the planning board, how, how soon do we have to get those people reappointed?
The next meeting is the planning board appointments, board reveals, all of the board and committee appointments are in the next meeting. That's why I wanted to have this discussion tonight.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that, at least in recent history, that you've not been in a position where you've had more applications than you had seats to fill. In, you know, some, everyone does things differently. In some communities, everyone has to reapply in the interview. They're interviewed by a, a committee, a subcommittee of the select board or the council, whoever, and you decide who you wanna put on based on either how people have been doing as board members or, you know, what you think someone new brings to a committee. Or it could be, in the experience that I had when I was an elected official, we each nominated a person and then brought them forward for the entire city council to decide on. There's all kinds of different ways to do this, but the thing is, if you're going to be discussing people, I did reach out to our attorney to make sure that we did this properly, because if you're going to be doing it, I had always been under the impression that it was all in public. And in Portland, when they interview for boards and committees, it's a public process, and, and people have actually sat in on it, which is kind of weird, but they have. But our attorney is saying that having researched it, it would be an executive session thing. So if you're actually going to decide among you, among, if you've got four applications and you want to decide who you want to put on, you're going to need to do that in executive session, because you're talking about people's reputations and a public, you know, the public perception of someone. If you want to come up with a, a policy that says everyone who is on a board is automatically, you know, reappointed if they apply, if they've been doing a good job, they've been showing up, you know, that's something else that you can decide as well.
Well, that's what we've done in the past, but we've also struggled with those appointees not always being able to show up, and sometimes they've struggled with having quorums. So we have added alternates to many of the boards in the past. I don't know if a lot of those boards have alternates right now, and alternates are usually a good way for a new person to get in, and you put them on, they get the experience. If, if someone, if they don't have a quorum, the alternate votes that night. If they do have a quorum, the alternate doesn't vote. And then when a member who's been on there and has done a good job decides, well, time for me to be moving along, one of the alternates is in a position to, the senior alternate generally, is in a position to, to take that spot.
You do have an alternate on the planning board, as far as I know, you only have one alternate position, and that is filled, and he is reapplying.
So. So should we be doing a policy or process or whatever?
It would, yes, you need a policy on how you're going to put people on the boards.
And, and the lawyer would have to draw this up?
No, no, it would be something that we would reach out to some other municipalities to see how they're doing it and come up with a policy, and you have to decide how you wanna go about doing it.
I think executive sessions.
Well, yeah, that part, we don't have a choice, but, I mean, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, that it should be an automatic renewal. And if, if, so every year, they just automatically get renewed unless they obviously don't want to be renewed, or at some point during the year, you know, there are issues that we need to address that we can approach them in executive session prior to the end of the term and, and discuss, you know, what their future should be.
The three-year term, like our planning board is.
Three-year terms.
Three-year term, right, so you're.
Same thing for the board of reveals, and the conservation commission, and the recreation committee.
For me, the word automatic is problematic. Well, it, it, I mean, in, in the, in the interest of, you know, finding the best people to serve the town, doesn't necessarily mean that the person who's been longest serving on a board is necessarily the best person. Now, I understand that long, long time service to the town is a value, is a value, and it should be a factor for sure in considering someone's candidacy. But to say someone who just, you know, has been occupying a seat is gonna be automatically reappointed without any evaluation and without any, you know, alternatives being considered, I don't, I don't, to me, that doesn't make good business sense.
I'm with Kent on that, I think if, you know, if there's somebody that's been on the board for fifteen years, but they reapply and a new person applies, and we sit down and discuss what people are bringing to the table, we should be able to make the best choice, whether it's the person that's been sitting for five years or this person that's bringing something
Different.
You know, different, and, you know, an experience from another town that will qualify them to move things, you know, and, and keep things moving and shaking, I guess. So I, I agree with Kent on that, I, I think automatic is problematic too. I think we should be able to review that and make a decision.
So, but this year, automatic is necessary.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, so. Because we're gonna do it next week. So this year, automatic is the way we've always done it, and will be what we do this year, I would think. Since we don't have time to do anything else. And, and then we can discuss in the year, future, develop policy and, and, you know, make it known to everybody. So we have, everybody has time to adjust to it, so we make a change. We, once we develop the policy, everybody understands what it is, and then we have a timeline. So when we come up to next year's appointment, we say, at this date, anybody interested in reapplying needs to submit their application. And this is the re, this is the review date, et cetera, et cetera. So the policy has timelines built into it.
But if we go, if, if we, if we went to these meetings, like we went to the planning board meeting and saw the, where the different members participated, if we went to the recreation committee meetings and listened to the, I mean, these people aren't, they're not getting a lot of money, or, or any kind of compensation for the work they put in. You get a lot of money.
Almost nonexistent.
So, so to, to do a proper evaluation of a member.
You need to go to the meetings, I've been to every meeting multiple times, and I've watched what goes on and how they participate. And the planning board in particular, there's a lot of history, a lot of law, a lot of statutes, a lot of ordinances that people happen on, and, and you can't just shoot from the hip, especially when you get to, let's say, shoreline zoning. You can get in real trouble with the main DEP if you make a wrong decision there.
I've just, so I just wanna be clear, so this year, we're gonna do automatic reappointments of the people who are on. And then next year, what we're expecting that we will do is we'll advertise for everyone and notify everyone whose term is coming up, that they apply, and anyone else who wants to apply. Then we'll schedule an executive session, and you will all go over those.
No, you're getting, you're getting ahead of the, you're getting the cart ahead of the horse. So what we decided is we're gonna do the automatic renewal for this year. Then we're going to develop a policy, which will cover what we're going to do moving forward.
But were you thinking, I thought I had heard you mention that everyone would apply next year?
That was just a thought, we haven't discussed, so we, we need to, we need to have a work session where we actually
Look at some policies.
Don't have anything else on the work session, so we can spend the time necessary to, to get everybody's thoughts together and then come to a consensus on what we wanna have for a policy and, and then move forward from there.
And if there, we have some samples from other towns, from other municipalities, like what we did previous, when we got examples from other municipalities.
You might like what Robin does, because I think that's how they do it, they get them all, they go into executive session, they discuss them, and then they advise the clerk on which ones to notify that they're being appointed, and then schedule that for, but I'll gather as many as I can for you, and we can deal with that over the next few months. But I, and I apologize that you have so much on your work session tonight, but really, I mean, these things came out of the election and we needed to get next steps on them, so, and then the planning issue just kinda came up, so.
So just, just wanna be clear that, so that people that are. So, just, just wanna be clear that, so that people that are currently serving on boards and committees don't. Don't jump to the conclusion that next year they're, they're going to have to reapply. And be considered in, in interview, cause we haven't decided that yet, we haven't decided anything moving forward, we've had thoughts and, and. And concerns expressed, but we haven't made any decision.
Right, well, they do have to reapply, everyone has to.
Right, right, but I mean, how, how that happens.
We haven't decided.
We haven't decided, so it's status quo right now until we tell everybody it's not status quo.
One additional observation, and, uh, this kind of dovetails off of what Doug has mentioned, is that if, uh, if the stipends aren't getting anybody rich. Uh, uh, if they're not compensating people for the time that they're putting in, then perhaps we should take a fresh look at stipends to see that. You know, we do get enough people interested to, uh, to, to have, you know, have their participation recognized.
I think the only one that gets a stipend is the board of appeals when they need, each get ten dollars. I, I don't think.
Excuse me?
Planning board does too.
Can you remember?
Yeah, they do, which is not, it's not, every.
But it's not a big one, it's not very big.
In fact, some select people don't get paid either, so, just saying.
I'd be in favor of abolishing the stipend for the select board.
Never mind, sorry I brought it up.
I've brought that forth numerous times, it's an honor to serve the town, I don't think we need to be paid for it.
Okay, so are we done?
We are done.
I would like to add one thing, if I might, real quick, um, I have actually tried to talk about the comp plan several times now. Keeps getting put, put off, all I was gonna say is no need to do it. The last meeting we had, um, the general consensus was, there's no way, uh, this is going to be ready for November. Election, period, it's just not going to happen, so we have time to get it together a little bit more. To, uh, uh, put it, uh, in some form where we see, uh, uh. Changes and, and other things that have been brought forward, so.
I'll take it off, I was open on.
Yeah, there's no need, and I'll talk to, I'll talk to, uh, the, uh, the chair of that committee.
Until, until we have a, the, the, a document that shows the changes, not just the, the comp plan as it exists, but. What's been done to it, how it's different, we, we, we need that before we.
I, I did convey those sentiments, and, and, uh, I'm sure the committee will work on that.
Thank you, so, we're done.
Oh, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, thank you.